Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome. I will call this meeting to order at 9:01 a.m. Let's do a round of introductions. We'll do a round of introductions in the room first and then move to online. I am Nancy Wise, Commissioner and Chair for the last meeting.
Pat Malone, Commissioner and Vice Chair.
San Jose Row Commissioner.
Good morning, Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Thanks, Ronnie, County Council.
And we'll go to anyone in the audience who'd like to introduce themselves.
Mark Jager, Benton County Resident.
Carol Alley, Councilmember.
Margaret Park.
I'm in a Navy's Administrative Assistant.
We're growing any kind of public information.
For my little report.
And those online who'd like to introduce themselves.
Good morning, Arlene Merrams.
Peggy Lynch.
Go ahead, Peggy.
Peggy Lynch, Benton County Citizen.
Samir Parati, BCTT Facilitator.
Lori Coughlin, RFL Group.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department Director.
John Peg, Public Health, Climate and Health Coordinator.
Hi, April Hahn, Public Health Administrator.
All right, is there anyone else online who'd like to introduce themselves?
Hi, Inga Williams, Planner. Thank you.
All right, and with that, we can move on to announcements. I don't believe there are any announcements other than to say Happy New Year, everyone. It's 2023, and I've heard lots of people saying, let's hope this is a great year. And I think it will be a great year, not to say that there won't be some downs with the ups, but hopefully there will be more ups than downs. And with that, we can move on to election of the 2023 Board Chair and Vice Chair. I will entertain a motion for chair.
I will nominate Pat Malone as Chair.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I do the vice chair too, or do I?
Yes.
Okay. Any, all the two emotions for vice chair.
Maybe I do it.
Difference. Once we wrap this up.
Okay. I still have it, so you better make the motion.
I would move to nominate Commissioner Ojero as Vice Chair.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and I will hand this to you, sir. Chair.
Thank you. Good job being Chair in 2022.
Thank you.
And I do nominate 2023 as a good year. All right. Announcements. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, Commissioner.
Consider the agenda approved. Next up is comments from the public, and we'll start with in the room, and we have two people signed up. Carol Alley, come to the mic, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you very much for taking public testimony. I brought a prop. I would like to encourage you to retain the ban on the traveling wild animal shows. This is an actual photo of the way they train baby elephants. The whole process is extremely abusive and unfair to the animals. It's way for me. I hope you all got my email. I had trouble getting county emails to go through, so you may have gotten it five or six times. I apologize. And hopefully you were able to watch the videos. That gives you the whole story of what goes on behind the scenes with these animals that are used for entertainment. I understand that the Fair Board, they're always trying to increase revenue naturally, but this isn't the way to do it. And I'm surprised that there wasn't more public notice of their proposed change. And also, it didn't seem like they probably had any people part of their decision that originally wrote the ban. And I feel it's very well written. It's very clear, and it's very fair to the animals. Do any of you have any questions for me about after reading my email and why it's so important that we keep this ban?
No, I think this is your time to.
Okay. As I said in my email, it's the animals are usually taken away as babies. They are abused and beaten. And then the elephants are continually handled with the bull hook. And as in the videos, they to get them to behave behind the ears, their legs, under their belly, their poked, stabbed. And they don't do it in the ring in front of any people. It's always behind the scenes. And the confinement when they're traveling, they're in very cramped quarters. They stand in their own feces and urine for how many hours it takes to get off the road. These are wild animals, and they never get rid of there. They never release their actual wild instincts. So there's a danger to the community. Sometimes they're not the travelers. They're behind a thin wire. They let public too close to them. And the last video that I mentioned in my email is the elephant Tyke. It was 20 years ago in Honolulu. Tyke had had enough in the ring. She killed her trainer and escaped the ring, the tent. She ran through the streets of Honolulu, was finally brought down by the 89th bullet. She was abused for so long, she just snapped. And we never know when that's going to happen again by one of these wild animals. Was that my time? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please keep the ban.
Next up is Mark Jager.
Good morning, Commissioners. That's not a good place to sit. Sorry. Sorry. Sounds right in my eyes there. I'm gonna, if you don't mind. Good morning, Commissioners, and Happy New Year to you as well. Here to speak with you about a couple of issues, just following up on my testimony from December 20th about the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. So at that meeting, I was basically asking for inclusion of the landfill as a unique fire risk. During the presentation, after I left, the staff made a presentation about wildfire risks at the landfill and cited Chief Harris's, the Adair Rural Fire Chiefs 2021 letter regarding the landfill expansion, which had nothing to do with the associated risks for fire at the landfill. So I believe that staff mischaracterized the letter's context, and after reviewing the meeting recording, I sent an email to the Board of Commissioners and key staff and copying Chief Harris, highlighting my concerns again, and pointed out the inappropriate use of the letter. So I would like to submit my record into the, my letter into their record today, and again, urge the staff and Commissioners to explicitly recognize the unique landfill risks of fire and include that in the plan as well as the history of the landfill fires. That's my first topic. A second topic today, I'd like to talk with you about the jail project. So I've been reviewing all the published documents related to the jail project, and so within the funding pie, there's a $34 million county capital funding section that's cited as a resource. There's no discussion of the funding mechanism, and since you're not planning to put that up for a public vote, it must be some type of a revenue bond. The adopted 2123 budget shows that you do have some projected reserves at the end of the biennium, but not enough to fund the $34 million. So I'm asking you, what are the specific revenues that you will be dedicating to meet the $2 to $3 million annual debt associated with this $34 million? And how do you plan to meet the debt service coverage requirements for that capital funding portion that's being funded by the capital, by the county? And also, as I've been reading, so there's been no articulation of the impacts of shifting the resources and which ones specifically are going to be shifted to meet the county capital funding debt obligation. I urge you to be transparent in explaining the cost of shifting these resources to support this debt payment. It's also concerning to me that the capital debt obligation will be made in April prior to the May election. So the timing seems to be a bit off. It also appears, based on what was happening at the last meeting, that the May bond measure now is increasing significantly from about, from 100 million was the original target up to 114 million. And there are several unanswered questions with regard to the resources pie, because it seems like you're counting on legislature giving you $5 million and some money coming here, going there. And it's also a little bit interesting that it seems like, and I can't stay for today's discussion because I have a meeting on the landfill, that you're planning to suspend CIP and ARPA funding programs. So those, those issues will have more impacts because of things that people are hoping to get done that are now not going to be done because of the jail project. I think these details are necessary for the public to fully understand their choices when considering the bond measure in May. Thanks for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else in the room wishes to present testimony at this time? Hearing none, is there any, anyone online that wishes to present this morning?
I believe Arlene would like to.
Yes, I would. Good morning. If you're okay, I'll just go ahead. Well, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to provide some additional input on the traveling animal ordinance ahead of your meeting next Tuesday, since you won't be taking public comment at that time, and you'll be making some decisions about it. So I did speak with a few individuals who participated in the work group meetings because I wanted to understand what informed their recommendations. And so what I learned was, first of all, the stated focus for the group was that the ordinance is understandable and enforceable. However, this was not the focus of their discussion or their recommendation. Second, that participants were just not familiar with the animal welfare issues in traveling animal acts. So the constant travel, the extreme confinement, the deprivation, the chronic stress, the lack of regulatory oversight. They did realize that, you know, animal welfare needs could not be met in traveling shows, but they didn't know all the details and and, and they also expressed concerns for species that were not banned. So I spoke with Shanti Mani, the new executive director, and she's very concerned about commercial traveling acts that label themselves as educational because she's familiar with this industry and understands that these acts are not educational. So what's now clear that I think you would want to know is that the work group did not consider the existing ordinance or how to implement it, even though that was kind of the focus, and the recommendation for a permit program is just not supported by the facts, and, and, you know, partly because they, well, they didn't have the facts to prepare a recommendation for you that, that was based on fact. So, you know, again, I just want to reiterate, as you think about this next week, the ordinance is not the problem. The problem is administrative. And as you know, key staff did not even know about the ordinance until there was a violation. And the violation happened because the ordinance did not include our edits that corrected and clarified the species list. And if it had incorporated those edits, the horse mistake and the stingray exhibit would not have happened. And it's just, it's really important to understand that the reason there was a problem is because of administrative issues implementing the ordinance. So the solution is to clarify the species list as we intended to do originally and provide guidance to staff. And Trudy and Lynn were on board with this approach when we met in October. And as a co-author of the ordinance, I, you know, I know what edits are needed if you will let me help you do that. If it is your intention, however, to allow wild animals to return to Benton County, then you will be, you know, we will all be complicit in this cruelty. Experience has shown that permits you.
Your three minutes is up, so.
Okay.
But up.
Yeah, and I just want to say the ordinance has strong support from county residents. We've got a petition to save the ordinance with over 400 signatures. So please honor the will of the people that you represent. And again, I'm happy to participate in a work session in an open and transparent public process so we can kind of resolve some of those issues. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else online that wishes to testify at this time? Hearing none, we will move on to item number five, our work session from the Health Department, a COVID update. So I think that to April.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Joe Vance, everyone. Happy 2023. So while I don't plan on sharing the full complement of data for you today, we've got lots of data to catch up on. Though I do have the basics for you today, I do want to share some relevant information with you today. And I'm not here to spoil your New Year. I promise it's all going to be okay. Over the, the past several months, there was no single dominant COVID-19 variant implicated in transmission. So no quick rising strain to outpace the others like we saw previously. Looks like that's changed over the last couple of weeks with a variant called XBB.1.5, elbowing out other Omicron variants. While this variant does appear to have an advantage in terms of transmission, and we should absolutely take precautions, it doesn't mean that it's an all-new apocalyptic super variant. So let me, let me tell you more. The, the soup of Omicron sub-variants, as I've referred to them, have included BA5, which we're familiar with as one of the components of our new bivalent booster. Others called BQ.1.1, BQ.1, the F.7, and, and, and many others. On the northeast coast of the US, another variant has quickly made its way to the forefront. And as I mentioned, it's called XBB.1.5. It is a sub-variant of Omicron, and over the last few weeks in the northeast corner has increased its, it's increased its estimated proportion among those circulating variants from about 30% to 50%, up to 75% of all circulating variants most recently. And nationally, its share has risen from about 4% of all the variants to 40% of circulating variants just over the month of December. So we haven't seen a variant that's taken off at that speed for several months. Here in the Pacific Northwest, the estimated proportion of this XBB.1.5 is around 18%, and it's expected to increase. We may or may not see significant increases in positive tests, but we'll be looking at cases, case numbers, testing positivity, wastewater data, and hospitalizations in the next couple of weeks and beyond to determine any impact. And some hopeful news, a new, a recent study in the New England Journal of Medicine found that the, the bivalent COVID booster significantly increases neutralizing titers to the parent variant of XBB.1.5, which is simply called XBB. And that means that more, it makes more antibodies which can bind to that parent variant and render it non-infectious. So while this new emerging variant hasn't been around long enough to amass a lot of data on it, it's likely to have a similar response to the bivalent booster, which is good news. So people who got a bivalent booster and others with immunity are likely to have anti-XBB.1.5 antibodies. In other words, hopefully we won't see big changes in terms of disease severity with this variant. That said, a wave of, of a new variant will likely be, you know, as bad as previous, as some previous surges, especially with so many other respiratory viruses circulating. Doesn't mean that we don't have anything to worry about. A lot of people infected still means a lot of hospitalizations and deaths, which have a lot of impacts. Obviously, even if a lower proportion than would be expected in a population without a lot of immunity, which we do have. So what can we do? We have a feeling of what I have for what I'm about to say. The most important thing is to get a bivalent booster if eligible, and if you haven't gotten one. Also, regardless of your immune status, stack on those other protective measures as we move forward into the new year. And cases increase such as masking indoors, increasing ventilation, and staying home when you're sick. We know that these things reduce spread. Again, staying up to date on vaccines is the single most important thing you can do to reduce your own risk and the risk to your community. Vaccination is most powerful at the community level, and vaccines would work better if more people were up to date. Vaccines are available at pharmacies and providers throughout our area. So contrary to some sensational reports, this variant XBB.1.5 does not appear to be supercharged to stop us in our tracks, but we need to use our tools and take it seriously. So go get boosted and take precautions, please. And if you haven't heard, home delivery of the rapid COVID-19 tests is once again available through the US Postal Service. So you can go search USPS COVID tests or go to special.usps.com slash test, test kits to claim yours. That's, that's the gist of my update for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns you have as well. Thanks.
Any questions for April?
Not at this time.
Okay, I, I've got one. I think it was last time, and you alluded to it here. If, if you're fully vaccinated, you're less likely, less able to spread the COVID. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, the last, the last time we had an update, I was speaking specifically to, to, to influenza as well as COVID-19 vaccines. Influenza vaccination provides more, provides good protection against onward transmission if you do become infected. COVID-19 vaccination. COVID nineteen uh vaccination does provide that benefit, but to a lesser degree than what we would see with uh an influenza vaccination. That said, that protective effect of not getting infected in the first place or having a lower viral load. Does result in less likelihood of passing on uh transmission to others, the infection to others.
Great, because I I I don't think I'd heard that before or remembered that. Uh, other question is, uh, what's going on in China? Do we have some concern that uh? Well, is the the spread of COVID in in China fairly rapidly? How will that i- impact us i- if at all?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Malone, you know, um. It it's it's a good question, uh, and it's and it's hard to say. We don't have great uh detailed data. Um, however, uh, you know, there are things that we can do here that we know reduce transmission. And that's what I believe that we should focus on. You know, the the government recently implemented. A requirement to show a negative COVID nineteen test for travelers uh from China to the US. Um, at the same time, you know, we're, we're, we're baking up our our own uh variants here. Um, and and could do a little to increase the amount of of uh gravity that. That we deal with COVID nineteen with uh as well. So. Um, while there are concerns about new variants cropping up in China. Uh, this XBB, for example, the first cases were found in the northeast of the United States. So um, we need to continue to increase vaccination rates, increase our other protections. And to look globally to ensure that people have access to vaccines and and protections to uh. To to help get through this thing.
All right, uh, thank you. Uh, doesn't look like there are any more questions, but really appreciate your uh updates and and. Uh, give us all a better idea of what our uh situation here i- is in Benton County. So, uh, thank you. All right, uh, next up, uh, update from the Benton County Talk Strays Solid Waste. Uh, work group. There he is, um, we're in Darren.
Hey, good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Joe. Good morning, Vance. Uh, we have a very brief status update for you this morning. Uh, I believe Sam in Paradi is prepared to provide a a quick update. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions you have about the project. And uh, the progress to date.
Uh, good morning, commissioners. Sam in Parati, the facilitator. The uh last meeting in in December gave us an opportunity to start. Uh, pulling together the various strings and start wrapping them together. And later on this afternoon, a very rough draft of the report will be. Uh, submitted to the work group and posted on the county's website. It provides a structure uh upon which the various subcommittees will graft. Their particular areas of influence uh in one place. We had a uh survey of members that went out just before the holidays, were starting to get. Feedback on those areas of the subcommittee findings and recommendations that. Uh, folks agree with and I don't agree with, and their suggestions for moving forward. Those will be all wrapped up and sent to the subcommittees uh over the next two weeks. We expect a meaningful draft to be uh ready for discussion at our next meeting. Which was uh will be on January and nineteenth. And from there, the process will be uh designed to continually refine. The work product of the work group and happy to report that uh we are on schedule and. Will be prepared to deliver the final report uh in March. The uh work group, as you know, has uh really been at it uh now for for some time. And because of their good behavior, uh, they were given uh time off in the last uh week or two. And and I have to report that uh most of them partied like it was twenty twenty-two. And are now ready to rock and roll into the new year. And that's really it. We're uh getting it done. Happy to answer any questions, take any comments or suggestions.
Any uh questions for Sam or Darren? Um, appreciate the uh update and and uh looking forward to. Um, bringing this um project uh to a conclusion here. So it's nice to, like, nice to hear. What the current steps are and and um getting ready for the final report here and. Within a couple of months, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Long.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up. Is our consent calendar.
I have a question. So under um item six point three. Uh, it's the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Not sure if I just am, was reading this the wrong way or what? I could use some feedback. Let's see, it's on page twenty of our packet. And it is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven paragraphs down. Um, the county does not receive five million from the state's staff suggests that the county backstop by suspending capital improvement projects. From the twenty-three, twenty-five budget and suspended defer release of ARPA. If the bond fails, the county will have to sacrifice those resources. If the bond passes, staff can insert the CIPs as a supplemental budget. Isn't that backwards? Or am I confusing myself? And the paragraph starts out, if the ca- if the county does not. It's just before the paragraph that starts option four.
If the county does not receive five million from the state, staff suggests that the county backstop by suspending capital improvement projects. From the twenty twenty-three, twenty-five budget and suspend or defer the lease of ARPA funding until the bond outcome is known. If the bond fails, the county will have to sacrifice those resources. If the bond passes, staff can insert the CP as a supplemental budget. So are you questioning the supplemental budget piece?
It, yes, if the bond fails, then we will have those dollars because we won't have to use them, correct?
It depends on whether we build EOC or not, because that's.
Okay.
But focused on.
Okay, so if this is, if this is correct, then that's fine. I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, I believe it's correct the way it is. Uh, Rick, uh, our CFO is here and he's also shaking his head.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved. A second.
Uh, all in favor of approving the consent calendar, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Um, consent calendar is approved. Um, next up, um, old business, seven point one, um, J-SIP. Bond, um, measure package deliberations and uh decision. Nick Girth and Rick Gregor.
Looks like the sun is now shadowed.
This huh? Yeah. Thank you, commissioners, uh, county administrator, county council. This is the opening twenty twenty-three version of the Nick and Rick Show. Potentially the final version. All right, so this is a a continuation of our discussion from December twenty of twenty twenty-two. Just to kind of give uh you a quick overview, since we've been gone a couple of weeks, um. Uh, we did provide a kind of a a broad overview of uh J-SIP deliverables. Community engagement, financials and next steps relative to our bond package discussions back on December sixth. Uh, followed that up with the meeting as I just referenced on the uh twentieth, where we reviewed updated financials. And then uh kind of dove into a discussion about options uh uh for the bond, uh, for a bond package. Uh, and we're coming back here today on January third, hopefully to make a a final bond uh package decision. Uh, then with uh deadlines not long away, uh, relative to uh. Bond measure title filing in February, so we should uh following today's meeting, um, if we make a decision, quickly move into. Uh, crafting our language and hopefully by early February, we'll have something for you to consider. Uh, uh, for a bond measure title and then of course our our bond measure on May sixteenth. So that's overview of our our work to date and ahead of us. In terms of objectives today, uh, similar to the last time, um. Did want to provide just a a quick update on cost estimates as. As Rick and I had warned you, uh, they are likely to be uh dynamic throughout the process. There's many unknowns. Uh, in this case, just a small change, but wanted to bring it to your attention since the uh spreadsheet that accompanied your packet had changed. Uh, just slightly from the twentieth. Uh, then again, uh, big objective for today is to uh determine a preferred option for a bond package and amount. Uh, and then as necessary, um, county backstop funding strategy, which uh we'll get into uh more discussion and explanation. On that here shortly. Okay, our assumption assumptions for today, um, again, similar from the twentieth, uh, we're targeting a bond amount near a hundred million dollars. Uh, and additional borrowing, uh, to the extent that there is a gap. Uh, relative to the bond amount versus target, uh, cannot be filled with additional county borrowing. So just a real quick cost update. Uh, effectively, uh, the total of all uh uh J-SIP facilities decreased, uh, roughly three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this is the outcome of actual dollars spent on planning. Uh, these are resources that were uh provided by OJD back in the uh twenty nineteen, twenty-one biennium. Uh, subsequently rolled over into the current biennium. Uh, and uh, the unspent funds will actually be rolled over into the next biennium and can be used for uh design and construction purposes. So no loss of fun of funding, uh, just we didn't spend as much in the planning process as we anticipated. It it does not effectively change the uh uh the total of a hundred and fourteen million. Um, for uh the proposed facilities for the bond measure. Rick, do you want to add anything? Okay, yep. We're just trying to, trying to keep everybody on the same page and uh as these uh spreadsheets change, we will continue to provide them to you. So in terms of the options that we were looking at, I'm going to move through these next three pretty quickly because they're just review. We had. Five options on the table uh uh on December twentieth. Um, and uh that included reducing the scope of the project, uh, reconfiguring scope. Uh, per- pursuing additional state funding, which also had uh some some scoping implications. Uh, and then the final two, uh, supporting uh bond measure amount equalling uh the resource needs or a hybrid of the above. On the twentieth, we uh you rejected the uh uh the first three. And so that leaves us today with uh two options uh for final consideration. Um, important point to note that um both options support the full suite uh and vision really of of. Uh, J-SIP, uh, so uh just wanted to uh underline, underscore that. In terms of kind of the pros and cons of those two options, this is again uh review, um, but. Uh, where the bond measure amount equals the uh total resource needs. Um, obviously, many pros, uh, again, uh, it certainly delivers on our our vision. Um, the only real con is that it does, uh, it does raise the bond amount and uh the taxable amount. Uh, to uh property owners, uh, roughly going from a hundred and thirty-eight dollars uh. Per year for the average assessed value household uh in Benton County. Uh, to a hundred and sixty dollars per year, um, uh, at a hundred and fourteen million. Uh, so that's the, uh, that's the financial impact. Option two, which is uh kind of a hybrid, many of the same uh pros, absolutely delivers on the full vision still. Uh, a little bit, there's still an increase to taxpayers, but it is uh somewhat reduced. Uh, we haven't actually done that calculation, but you can interpolate from the numbers. It's roughly halfway between. One thirty-eight and one sixty, so probably falling somewhere around uh hundred and fifty dollars. Let's say, depending on where you land on a bond amount. Uh, it's actually a pretty complicated calculation that comes from our uh bond council. Uh, to arrive at those numbers, so we didn't request an additional one. We we certainly will, uh, once we align on a bond amount. Uh, and then it it pulls into with these hybrid options, the need for um. What we're referring to as a backstop, um, I think it's more, uh, backstop is a nice short word that fits on the slides nicely. But I think a more correct term would be a reprioritization of resources. I want to be clear. Uh, and invite Rick to comment as well. You know, there's, there's no uh pot of unspent money sitting off to the side that we can use as a backstop. It it honestly is uh looking at current uh allocations or future intended allocations. And saying that we're going to use those in a different way. And Rick, do you want to add anything to that?
First of all, good morning, commissioners and happy new year. Uh, again, I I won't add much more. What Nick had already said is that I think it's it's important to really get that. This is not like additional dollars that we have available to be able to do this. This is a essentially a um. A reauthor or reprioritization. We already have plans for all of these dollars that we're talking about, be it CIP, be it ARPA dollars. And any other budgetary resources. So what we'd be doing is essentially putting a suspension on that, delaying that until we know more. And obviously, if things don't come the way we had planned, we would be using those resources and in place of and. Not putting them towards the other priorities that they had initially been set, so.
Thank you, Rick. So let's dive into some of the amounts and options and talk about reprioritization. And I, I think it will work best if I go through the whole deck and then we can come back to specific questions. Since everything kind of builds on 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 itself. Um, so again, we have two options on the table. Uh, the first option is to increase the uh bond amount to equal the um facility needs. Uh, which is approximately a hundred and fourteen uh million dollar bond amount. Um, I want to make one clarification here, uh, when we talk about um backstop, there's, there's two components here. So one is we're making a, uh, potentially making a legislative ask of five million dollars for the EOC. Um, uh, and we're also having money in the bond measure for the EOC, essentially a a fifty fifty split. Um, were that legislative ask to be uh rejected. Uh, we would still want and need to build an EOC. And so potentially we would have to backstop or fund, fund ourselves up to five million dollars. Uh, so that we could complete our EOC as part of the uh uh community safety and justice campus. So that's, that's one component. community safety and justice campus. So that's, that's one component. The other component is the proposed homelessness navigation center. And this is a bit of a different scenario where the county may, may need and want to step in and certainly will be part of our discussion today. In that scenario, were we to allocate some amount for the homeless navigation center? And in your previous meeting, you authorized up to $3 million for that purpose. There is the, the potential outcome where legislature, so there's, there's our, our amount and then a legislative ask. There's an outcome where the legislature approves its funding and the bond measure fails. And now we're in a situation of having to decide, are we going to move forward with our commitment or not? And so that is also a potential backstop. And that's why you'll see in that backstop column while, why there's a high and a low number, the five million represents the EOC. The eight million in that, that first scenario there under two A represents a $3 million commitment from the county. And then the potential that the bond measure fails. And so we have to, we may decide to make good on that commitment regardless of the outcome of the bond measure. As I go through these, so there's actually three different versions of the second option. And which I'm referring to as hybrid A, B and C. They really are reflective of how much money we are allocating or committing towards the homeless navigation homelessness navigation center. Again, we've, you indicated up to 3 million, however, we haven't aligned on an exact amount. And so that really is part of part of the discussion today as well as we land on a, on a final bond amount. So this kind of represents the flavor of, of scenarios that you have to consider today. And again, I'm going to pause and ask if Rick would like to interject. Yeah, we can.
I, well, I just, I guess I just wanted to point out, and Nick will probably cover this as we go through these, but the first option, I think it's important to know that's obviously assuming the entire bond is approved or the 114 million dollars is what you, what you land on. There is a backstop situation there as well. So there's a little bit of correction that we need to do here. So the assumption is, is when you look at the homelessness column, that that's going to go forward regardless of any scenarios. You're going to have a legislative request, nine million dollars or whatever. And then the balance would come from the bond funding. So there's a little corrective that you might want to make there in terms of option one, but that would still go forward. And the assumption here would be that we would backstop the $3 million in relation to that. So I just wanted to put that out there as, as a clarity. Might be asking, well, would you be back stopping the $10 million? But then we would be in excess of what we have into our means. So we would not have the resources to be able to, to do that. So that's just a little clarification that Nick and I caught here earlier this morning. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware as we go into it.
Rick, does that change the actual slide itself in terms of what you just shared? Yeah, that, that first row under backstop should be zero slash three. Thank you.
Correct. And then you probably want to put nine million in the legislative ask for the homelessness piece, correct?
Yes.
Cause that's assumption is that that's moving forward.
Yep.
In the two bond funding columns, that, that means the May, May of this year asked.
Yes. Also, Rick, another point of clarification, when you talk about the nine million dollar legislative ask, that's a legislative ask that would be made by the Prowala State Time Drop in Center, or that would be a legislative ask from Benton County.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. I think that's a conversation for later this week, Joe, that we need to, to have in combination with Allison and others to figure out what strategy goes as we discuss with you, the issue with the bonding piece becomes an ownership component. So we need to figure out the best strategy. So that's, I think it, it could be either or.
Okay, TBD. Yes, in other words, thank you. Okay. And so in terms of kind of scenarios for those hybrid options, there are different outcomes of both legislative ask and, and bond measure outcomes that can affect the amount of the backstop. And I also have a correction on this slide. But in, in the first case, you know, legislature rejects the EOC funding, approves navigation center funding, bond measure passes. We would need to basically backstop the legislative ask portion of the EOC. So that's five million. Second case, that should say bond measure passes, not fails. Legislature rejects EOC, approves navigation center funding. Do I have that right? Rejects EOC funding, approves navigation center on measure fails. I apologize. I, I think I have that one next up. So let's move on. I apologize. I just, it's not making sense to me. So it's certainly not going to make sense to you. Third case legislature approves EOC funding, approves navigation center funding. But the bond measure fails. In that case, you, you still have to come up with money for the navigation center. And then finally, the legislature approves EOC funding, approves navigation center funding on measure passes. In that case, you're, you're good. So I think that represents the suite.
You can actually, you did have it all right.
Okay.
It, 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 in all cases, the first two assumes that the bond measure is, so basically it's giving you the idea of what your range would be in each of those various scenarios.
So okay. This is what happens when you go away for two weeks. Okay. So county backstop funding sources. This particular slide just is meant to paint a picture really of total options for reprioritization of, of funding. And then we'll get into a specific set of scenarios or options to consider. But basically there are various items, both known and unknown, which have varying degrees of fungibility, which means they can quickly be turned into cash. And so the first two there are really the lower fungible items, kind of the unknowns on the table that Rick and I spoke about on December 20th. Certainly capitalizing the county share of the old LED is an option. And in lieu of your decisions on the 20th, which didn't require the use of the LED, the existing LED and any of the remaining bond measure options, there's also the potential to capitalize other other facilities, specifically the old BOC building as well. So we have, we have options that we could potentially pursue to create or to capitalize existing assets. Second one was one that we shared with you on the 20th relative to the allocation agreement with OJD relative to the courthouse funding. That's one that is still to be determined and could even change depending on the outcome of the bond measure. But both of those two, you know, we will know some in, in several months where we stand and could, could be potential sources of funding. The next three are much more fungible, suspending CIP or deferring CIP. Deferring future ARPA funding or kind of strategic limited budgetary strategies relative to the upcoming budget or hiring that could all produce produce reprioritization of resources to offset the bond amount. And so you can see down there, the total is, is larger than anything we're contemplating. However, all of those resources aren't, aren't known, Rick. And would you like to embellish here?
No, that you did great, Nick. I guess I would just say to you commissioners that you know, look at this as your menu of, of backstop options and the fungibility pieces is key. Obviously those are the dollars that are real. They have dedicated purposes right now. We obviously are in a place where we need to make decisions. So that's where I would encourage your eyes to go as you looks at determining is what makes, so going back to that previous slide of what is the backstop amount that you end up landing on? This is sort of your menu of trying to figure out how best to place that. Now, the first two are possibilities like Nick said, and we could know sooner than later. We don't know the timing of that. So that could free up abilities to say, okay, let's say OJD negotiates with us to a place where we're able to put more site development cost into that, then we could shift resources around. But again, because of the timing, we have to make those decisions now and we don't have answers to that. So that's the way I would just think about this slide.
Nick, I have to have a follow up question to one of the options or the last one on the page that you're looking at right now. It's the strategic limited budget slash hiring program. The, when we talk about the hiring program, I believe that's associated with managing vacancies, delaying hiring, anything around our workforce that we would try and leverage.
Yes. Thanks for the, the question, Joe, and I apologize for sort of the vague, broad language there, but that was more intentional on my, my part to not to just say it would be particularly positions. It could be any form of budgetary administrative restrictions, anything that we decide to put in place to free up resources to be able to reprioritize. So but to your point, Joe, yes, it could be positions that we, we choose to freeze for some reason or administrative restrictions on materials and supplies, various types of things that we can take on, look at.
Oh, thank you, Rick. Commissioners, just looking back at our history, if you will, that we have from time to time used those administrative constraints as Rick terms them to help manage our budget and most recently did that during the COVID outbreak when early on it was a concern that we didn't know the impacts ultimately of COVID. So it's not out of the ordinary, but I did want to at least make sure that the board was aware that that is one way in which we can help manage this if needed. I wouldn't say it's necessarily a preferred way and it certainly has its impacts to departments and the services we offer.
It also offers the least bang for the buck. So it's one of those that is difficult to contemplate because those are tend to be resources people count on. Whereas some of the others are not yet allocated.
Yeah. It's a good point. So final slide here before we can dive into a detailed discussion. These are, this is a suite of backstop funding options. It is by no means all inclusive. I'm not suggesting that we necessarily even work from this set, but it was trying to lay the groundwork for further discussion and just represent some types of options. An important point I want to make about today's discussion is that we have two objectives today, one of it, one of which is to determine the bond amount. The other is to determine a backstop or reprioritization strategy as necessary. In terms of moving forward with, with bond measure language, it is not requisite that we determine our backstop option. The two are, are independent objectives. However, the one does may or may affect the other in, in terms of the decision you make. So I just want to be clear that the backstop is really not part of the bond measure. It is of course part of your fiduciary responsibility to know where that money is going to come from, or have some sense of where that money is going to come from and be comfortable with that. If that day comes to pass, depending on various outcomes legislative as well as the bond measures. So I just wanted to, to make that point here.
And I just add, I agree with Nick that obviously our, our objective here is to land on what the bond measure amount is. That's what we want to be able to do today. But as, as Nick said, that what that decision then moves to the next piece of backstop, what do we do? And you all know that we're in the middle of getting ready for budget development. And so there are decisions that will need to be made. If they're not made today, they're going to be, need to be made. I would say within the next couple of weeks in, in relation to what though, that menu that I was telling him about, what that actually ends up being, because we need to be able to move forward in the process.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to?
Yes.
I, it does. And I guess part of this too, is that we should be thinking in terms of probabilities. There's what, what is the probability that we will get the five million towards the EOC? What is the probability towards one thing or another? Now so much of this is all about our attitudes towards risk and what we are willing to put on the table, you know, in order to buy down that bond amount just a bit. So, yeah.
Agreed. Yeah, this is an imperfect science. Certainly relative to the, the less fungible items, there's there's a probability of one or the other or both maturing in our favor to some degree. And I think there's other elements there as well. Yeah, the legislative piece.
Commissioners also, just to reiterate, what staff needs today, our, our main objective for today is really the board arriving at a bond amount. Preferably from my standpoint, you not only arrive at a bond amount, but you arrive at a reprioritization number or backstep number. If you're uncomfortable with doing that, the second part of that today, we could delay it until our goal setting meeting next Tuesday. And it's really at that point that I would say, board, we have got to get the backstop strategy approved from you because as Rick indicated, we're moving forward with our budget process. And if we don't make a decision by next week on the backstop strategy, it can become problematic for us as we try and move through the remaining portion of our 2023 to 2025 budget process.
So I think at this point I'd like to open it up to, to questions and comment and discussion from you. I've gone back to this slide, which I, I believe is probably the most helpful for, for us to work from. But just direct me where you'd like to go.
I have a question. Since we had the question come up in public comment earlier, could we just quickly answer the question about for the public, where the 35 million is coming from and why we are doing it before the bond?
I, I did not catch that question because I came in a few minutes late. Can you repeat it, please?
Rick, do you know what? I think you guys helped me if I got part of that wrong. I think the question was specifically to the $34 million that we are going to put towards county borrowing. That's part of the Jacep. And why is that coming for the bond? So first, I think the, the easy answer is that the current project as it stands, we are essentially fully funded specifically to our courthouse and our DA's office. That $34 million represents the match against our OGD, OJD dollars that we are in the process of negotiating. So that is, I consider that the phase one, as you know, in our spreadsheet, that's phase one of the project. That is the portion that we are moving forward with right now. What we're talking about here really is the phase two component of, of the Jacep piece, which is all bond dependent. So again, kind of think of them into subsets. So phase one is completely funded with the 34 million. I think the second question that was put in was, so there was a question I wanted to respond to in relation to how the financials, the budget, the individual was looking specifically from our budget document, which is, is good, but remember that's the budget and then you get the financial statements each and every year. So those financial statements, as we've talked about, show improved growth beyond what we had budgeted. I think there was a reference of $5 million. show improved growth beyond what we had budgeted. I think there was a reference of five million dollars of reserves. In total, it's about twenty-two million dollars of general fund reserves. And then what we do is we plan that growth over the thirty-year bonds, and that's how we pay that is to look at the cash flows. You guys have seen my little charts before. That that show how that works. So I know that gets a little bit complicated. It's a little hard to follow. You don't actually find a dollar amount on a particular budget or a financial statement. So.
But moving forward, after we've borrowed, then we will budget it because we will have refunds that we will have to have. So then it will be in black and white and we will show a source.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Ojero for that. Yes. So right now, so keep in mind, again, you while we have made the planning around doing the thirty-four million dollars of bond borrowing, I still have to come before you, and that has to be actual authorization when we are at that time. But of course, we're waiting for Vance and I and others to finish the O J D piece so that we have that all secure, then we will move forward with that. But at least right now, it's an operating plan. So once that's been approved, then we would come to the budget. More than likely, we're looking at probably at the very, very end of twenty-one, twenty-three, or the first of twenty-three, twenty-five to add it. But to your point, Commissioner Ojero, it'd be very nice and clean and 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 put within our budget um process.
Sure. If I could just say it in sort of like a basic way, it's us, it's our private borrowing. Um, we are borrowing against like our future budget. We're paying it back out of property taxes that we're going to be getting. So it's not going to raise property taxes any. So when people say why aren't you living within your means? I think this is an example of us living within our means, just like you get a mortgage on your house and you pay it down over so many years with the money that you have.
Essentially using the strength of our balance sheet to enable us to be able to borrow without asking for more money from the taxpayers.
And this is a very common tool, correct? I mean it.
Very correct. General obligation bonds.
This is how cities fund and counties jurisdictions fund big projects.
That's, yes.
Along with bond ventures. Yes.
So, um, part of the confusion is uh proposals and uh future product prospects uh and trying to compare them uh against the current budget in in uh, so the idea is we will uh flesh this out um in the relatively near future, how we're proceeding on the on the uh borrowing uh ahead of the the bond. And so it will be very clear, the amount and uh what what it's um backed up with.
That is absolutely correct, Commissioner Malone. And and again, to this point, you all have done a great job in terms of laying out the plan. And as we talked through and moving all of the the resources together, now we're just waiting for all the parts to come into place. Once again, we get through the judicial department and getting all that in place, that's when I will start to move the wheels to actually move towards a real borrowing a structure.
And I don't know if we made it clear before, but the reason it's coming before the bond is because it's for the courthouse. And the courthouse is not part of the bond. We have about twenty-five million dollars coming from the state, and we are building the courthouse, whether or not the bond passes. So that's why it's coming before the bond.
Well said, Commissioner Moise.
Uh, I like to look at it like uh Rick alluded to earlier, it was really how phase one and phase one is the courthouse and the crisis center. Uh, both of those projects are being funded with direct borrowing and or other uh legislative dollars that we've been able to achieve. And so those two projects are really what I consider to be phase one. And then the phase two projects, which are the ones that we're proposing to be funded by the bond uh are the correctional facility and the law enforcement building uh and the E O C through a combination of bond as well as legislative assets.
Well, as well, the homelessness navigation center and the uh children and family uh program relocation.
Thank you, Nick.
Well, it seems like.
You flip to the chair?
Oh, certainly.
Sure. So I I'll I'll. No, so the the correction, uh, so first of all, the bond amounts uh on the right side, those are and those are all still the same, correct? So basically, uh, the number one, uh, first row, we should have nine million dollars in the legislative ask for the homelessness, just like in two A. Um, and then it would be three million dollars coming from the body, but then the county backstop would say zero slash three. Sorry about that. That was.
Well, it it seems like we have two uh questions to answer and and one uh, we definitely have to do today, and that's the uh, we got the proper slide. Wh- what uh what is the bond amount that we want to go forward with? So let's split split the baby in half uh bond uh amount first and then talk about the backstop.
I can make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, I move to set the J sub bond amount at a hundred and fourteen million, including funding for expanded mental health and homeless services facilities, a new correctional facility, and a new emergency operations center and sheriff's office. And if I get a second, I can speak to it, and we can always see how the vote goes.
I would prefer to speak to it first.
Yeah.
Okay, I will remove my motion.
Go ahead.
Um, I am fully in favor of the whole vision and the whole package. Um, and um but I'm also wanting to be cost sensitive and um, again, thinking of those probabilities and the and the acceptable risks uh that we can take. Um, uh, I I would prefer to go for hundred and nine hundred and ten million. And you know, I realize that's not a huge difference. Um, but I think that it's um I I feel more comfortable that way, trying to live a little bit uh more wi- within our means, as some people say. Uh, and reprioritizing uh to state uh as a commissioner that this is right now in twenty twenty-three um my top priority. Um, and it I would really hope that we would not have to dip into those backstop options. Um, and legislature willing, um, and the, you know, everything else aligning, we won't. Um, but that's my preference.
Okay, in the discussion today, I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces and and uh at this point, we need to um, sell on a number uh a dollar amount, and I think uh w- we need the full amount. It's how we get there. And so I I think it's important to um show the uh greater community that we are working hard at at uh uh achieving the whole project, but uh I I'm uh in favor of uh something in the one oh eight, one oh nine million uh range and uh we have, we have good options and that also uh we have good options for um getting additional uh funding. And I think that uh I think will help us work harder uh at at uh looking at some of those alternative uh funding sources. And I think that's a important message to uh get to the uh community. So um, there there's no uh question on the on the goal. It's uh how we get there and I would be much more comfortable in uh one oh eight, one oh nine million uh dollar range because we we have um several options for uh making up the difference to the one fourteen. The other thing that was hopeful, uh, we started out with, well, we we spent three hundred thousand dollars less than uh projected, and it's nice to have uh uh information on a part of the project that says, oh, we're we're under under what we projected because we've had um uh quite a few months of uh increasing costs, but I I am hopeful uh going forward. You just look at uh gas prices, car prices, there are significant uh indicators that maybe we have at least plateaued, if not uh beat in in some of the in- inflationary um pressures that that are um built into our um budget here. So um I would um, I guess entertain a motion.
I would like to speak first. Um, so I apologize for cutting you off. A few different things I would like to say, and I feel um pretty strongly about it, so I'm gonna try my best. Um. I guess, you know, so we've heard from the community that homelessness support is a top priority, and we have agreed as a board that we are going to go with that direction. We listened to that. Um, I, Commissioner Ojero, you spoke about risk and risk aversion. I am risk averse in this situation. I don't want to put all of our eggs. I don't want to put eggs in the basket of getting state funding that we might not get to then risk our ARPA and our C I P dollars. I have printed out um our ARPA dollars summary of a grant funding. So if we are going to tell people that we support homelessness, and then we're going to take away money that we have told places like Community Outreach, Inc., Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center, Corvallis Housing First, Unity Shelter, and all of the other wonderful nonprofits on this list, we're going to say, we're not going to let you, you don't have the ability to to apply for these funds anymore. So what we're saying is we're going to fund homelessness by taking away some money from homelessness over here. And that doesn't feel right to me. That feels like a shell game and like we're not being truthful with what we're doing. And I think um opponents of the bond could bring that up. In addition, we have a lot of stuff on our C I P. Um, I missed one of the pages, but that's and I apologize. I should have printed out one more for you, Joe, which I think is out there on the printer still.
This is the current biennium.
Correct. So but this is just an example of some of the things, just to give an idea. If I'm going to risk these funds, I want to have an idea of what's at stake. Um, there is, I I did have a question. So under twenty-three, twenty-five biennium, there are some numbers listed. Um, like under I T, it talks about um hardware scheduled replacement. Um, under law enforcement, it talks about ballistic vest program and vehicle purchase and setup. Are those grant funds or or is that money that we need to come up with?
Those during the time, um, thank Commissioner Moise for the question. Uh, at the time of the budget, when you do the C I P, there is also the estimating what potential liability there is that could be created through continuing operation cost that might be continued. So that would be additional cost if that project came through, that would be built into your current service level budget.
Commissioner Moise, just uh to address your points, uh, you are correct that uh, the departments would be impacted uh if we were to suspend C I P. Uh, the projects that you were looking at, there are for our current budget period. Uh, we are going through our budget process for twenty-three, twenty-five right now, and part of that is developing our C I P budget for that uh for that next budget cycle. Uh, Rick's right in the middle of that, and we uh, I believe we have a rough concept of what C I P projects are being proposed. Uh, it certainly is a lot more twice uh what we have typically budgeted for C I Ps. So I would say we have requests out there in the neighborhood of six to seven million for twenty-three, twenty-five. Uh, and that doesn't mean all of those would be approved. Typically, we do get more requests than money we've allocated. Uh, but just know that we are in the process of evaluating those uh projects for twenty-three, twenty-five. Uh, I'm not sure that they would be in a position for the board to see next week or not. Um, in case that had some relevance to your decision, but just know that we are right in the middle of that process uh for our uh uh next biennium budget.
Thank you, and I hope that everyone here is aware that I do understand and I can read which biennium this is for. Again, I just printed it off because I don't have a list of the current options that might be on the chopping block. This is just something that can give me an example and maybe help other people. So. Um, and and you know, talking about the limited budget hiring program, you know, coming out of COVID, we, our employees have just been uh, you know, beaten up and had have had a really hard time. We've all been struggling, and I just that would not be a great option. That would not, our our county employees need more support, um, not more pressure. Um, I just don't think it's worth risking other parts of the county operations and other parts of our community. That's just, that's, I don't know. That's where I'm coming from. I don't, I would love to for the state to give us money, but we cannot sit here and say that that is going to happen.
We we certainly can't count on it, but we can put odds on it.
So how do we put odds on it?
And if I were, if I were doing that, I would say that we have probably a sixty, seventy percent probability of of getting some funding towards the E O C. That's just my gut level feeling. It's based on my experience to date. And um so we go from there. The other is that, you know, uh, when it comes to some of the groups that we have been able to fund with our ARPA dollars today, um, I would hope that they would also support us in whatever the requests are that we make to legislature, both on behalf of the navigation center and on behalf of the emergency operations center, because everyone needs to understand that this is part of the funding strategy for what we need to do in order to not put our ARPA dollars at risk. So, um, I I think that that's what uh Commissioner Malone was alluding to when he was saying that if if we need to make real serious pledge to go after those additional dollars so that we don't tap our taxpayers any more than we have to. So, uh, uh, and in that regard, I, you know, I completely agree. The priorities in the the ARPA bucket are are very important. They are incredibly important social services in the community, and I would hope that we would not need to tap into them and that whatever strategy we have for reprioritization will not um hit that bucket entirely. There are a lot of people counting on those funds coming available. Um, so, yes, thank you. And it, go ahead. Sorry, Pat.
Well, part of the problem is the uh timing and we need as much certainty right now as we can muster. Um, but we have, um, I mean, the legislative session hasn't even started and from the initial discussions, there will be uh some money for the uh homeless uh housing um uh area. So uh in addition to the uh potential for the E O C funding. So I I think we have uh time to um, get get good options, even though we have to um, make a decision uh today on the um total dollar amount and and at least uh um, continue the discussion on uh potential uh alternative uh funding sources.
And again, I just, I mean, I want to highlight a word that Rick said, which is dedicated. These funds have already have, have already been dedicated. We've already had a plan for these. I sat up here a year ago or however long ago and said that I was willing to allocate our ARPA dollars for a certain intent. And I don't want to go back on what I said. And I know, I I know, so, yes, maybe we'll get the money from the state, and this is a moot point. That would be great. I would love that. But the difference in price is twenty-two dollars a year on the average assessed value house, which is a dollar eighty-three per month. I don't want to risk our ARPA dollars for a dollar eighty-three per month. And when you talk about, when we want to talk And when you talk about, when we want to talk about certainty, if we want certainty, we can set the bond amount at one fourteen and be certain that we're not going to have to dip into the all ARPA dollars and that we are going to have the things that we need and that we still can ask the legislature for the, the nine thousand and whatever. I'm okay. I'm done.
Commissioner, is, is there a we've been talking around the hundred and eight million dollar range to a hundred and fourteen million dollar range. We don't have particular options that, if you will dissect that any further than what you're seeing here today. But it makes me wonder if there's not another number that the three of you might be able to support and looking to staff to see whether or not that would make any difference. You know, instead of a hundred and eight or a hundred and fourteen. You know, there's other options that the board might be able to come together on. We haven't delineated, you know, all of those options. We've just tried to provide what we as staffs here, the, the most likely and the for us to be able to manage effectively.
I'd be happy to consider a number such as a hundred and ten that would require if we look back to the other, the backstop spreadsheet. For Nick, that would allow us to split and use a partial source from you know, but partial from ARPA and, and you know, partial from CIP to get to a four million reprioritization. Or, you know, hopefully have available some of the OJD allocation savings as well, because that could be significant. I, I just think that there are so many moving parts and that there's a lot of opportunity for for some of the other funding pieces to fall in place. So I, I would be happy to make a motion that a hundred and ten million can move forward with this process.
I, I will second that.
I can make a formal motion. Set bond amount at a hundred and ten million with then with a five million legislative ask for Emergency Operations Center and a nine million legislative ask for Homeless Services Facilities with the, and the three million county contribution from the bond measure towards the Homeless Services Facilities.
Second. Hall of favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Can we take a break, please?
Yes. We will take a six minute break and be back at ten thirty-five.
Recording in progress.
Must be Monday.
Ish.
All right, we, we will get back on track here. Continue the JACIP discussion. We've decided on the bond amount and now it's which we had to do today and then backstop funding options. We need a review. It's maybe it starts on age fifty-five in the packet. I think that's couple, couple. There we go.
Commissioner Malone, if you're okay with that, I think it would be a good idea to start with staff asking for a little bit more insight. I think we're unlikely to get, I need to come back to the meeting on next Tuesday and confirming the backstop strategy, but we do have a number of questions that will help us decide what next steps we need to take, if any, at this point. So Rick and Nick, if you'd like to just jump in, that'd be great.
Yeah. So I think maybe a place to start is back to this particular slide here and in terms of the decision that was just made. So essentially what we're talking about is, let's just say two A, hybrid A. And what has changed now is the legislative ask for the EOC becomes four million and the bond funding becomes six. And that takes you to a hundred and ten million.
And why is the change there?
Are we, so we can, we, we doesn't have to be there. So we, we could certainly, there's different places that we could change that and make sure we could say you could change the homelessness amount from ten to two. So again, there's, there's different ways to, to kind of focus on this depending on where you want to, to make it.
It, it seemed like the legislative ask at five million had some basis and been, been through a process, so same thought process. Can't we leave the legislative ask at five?
I don't see why the legislative ask has to change if the bond number changes really frankly, because.
Well, and you know, it doesn't necessarily have to change. Let me just tell you, we're, we're operating off the advice of our consultant. And one of the things that they were very clear to Nick and I don't ask for something in a bond and then turn around and ask for that's a portion or all of that amount in a state request. And that's essentially what we could be doing here. Correct. So that, that's, that's why we're, I mean, we certainly can continue to move forward with five million dollars, but basically the way we have sort of drawn it up here is you only need four. That makes sense.
Yes.
So, so I, we could still do that. But again, I think our, our consultants were just wanting to be really careful with that to make sure that they weren't weren't asking for something on one hand. If I don't get it, then I get it here.
It's really helpful for us commissioners to understand really what's your interest that you're still trying to achieve via this backstop. Because that will drive some of the future budget decisions and can, you know, we can bring something back to you next week. But it would be, I, I heard several interests from Commissioner Wise in terms of CIP as well as ARPA. I heard some similar concerns from Commissioner Ojeda, maybe not to the same extent. But if you could maybe speak to us about what you're wanting to achieve as we consider the backstop. I think that will help give us maybe some better for you.
I can say for sure that I was not considering asking less of other sources. What I really want to ask less of is our taxpayers directly here in Benton County. So it's counterintuitive to me to have considered a lower number and then turn around and not ask for that money from other sources. That's a little frustrating.
If I may ask one question. One of the less fungible items was capitalizing an existing facility. And I know that's been a point of discussion throughout the redesign process. Of course, we've never had, had it in this, in this setting and forum. But certainly, and I didn't hear it discussed here earlier today, but you know, certainly the county could decide to be more aggressive about capitalizing a facility. I'm, you know, very much aware that there are facility needs across the county that would potentially compete with that strategy, but it would be helpful to know if that also is of consideration here in terms of kind of solving the backstop mix.
Are you talking about the old VOC?
Yes, certainly. Well, both, I mean, the old LED or the old VOC or the, the two primary and certainly the old VOC is the one that's most readily more fungible than the old IP at this point.
We also have the courthouse annex across the street.
That's great.
So not exactly a high value property, but I personally think that while I'm ready to talk about the reprioritization of dollars, I also want to think about the calendar of when we're going to have more information about some of those dollars and the OJD allocation. For instance, we should have more information even possibly prior to the bond. Because we want, if we're kind of fighting borrowing in April, we're hoping we'll have that, at least some of those agreements in place by then. So I think that we could have, you know, anywhere from zero to four million based on your spreadsheet available, just on that basis alone. So I, well, I think that the reprioritization discussion is really critical. I don't think that we need, I don't want to get us all tied up in knots about it if we, if it turns out that it's all for not, sorry about the tongue, but the so I, I, I guess I'm hopeful about some of the, the OJD. so I, I guess I'm hopeful about some of the, the OJD at relocation funds and I'm also hopeful that we can so we can buy down what we need to do with respect to either ARPA or CIP. I agree with Commissioner Wise. I don't want to touch the staffing component if it can possibly help it. Sorry, go ahead.
So commissioners, I guess I would just say to you, and I know this is a difficult discussion, particularly when there's, you know, plans that have been made in relation to very important priorities and projects. I think to Commissioner Ogero's point though, and again, it's always hard because you, I always have to look at things from the worst case type scenario and obviously want to plan ahead for that, but we do have several things that are out there in, in relation to, I, I feel very confident from the legislative point of view, I do feel like there's a good story there. But again, to your point, Commissioner Wise, there is no guarantees in that. But in addition, I do think to the, the, the discussion with OJD is still fluid. And I do think that we can continue to push hard. I know our consultants are very optimistic that we should be able to make that case around that additional four million. But of course, I just can't count on that in the bank. And then there is the, the question of the, the whole law enforcement building, where is that going to go? So I do think there are a variety of opportunities in front of us. It's just unfortunate that our timing, we're just, I think those things are going to play out here in the next several months. So I think that is, is again, I, I think there's reason to believe that we have good opportunities to be able to preserve those backstops that you would choose to put forth today. I think one question I would like to, to just ask of the commissioners in terms of putting together a proposal for you is, is there an objective here in trying to preserve? I heard Commissioner Wise talk a lot about the CIP and the ARPA in terms of the commitments. Is there a objective? Are you trying to get to a point of preserving some of that?
Yes.
To be able to continue to move now in our processes? Because like Joe said, we have a CIP that we need to start putting real process to. And then of course, ARPA, I'm ready to get rolling here in the next two weeks to at least get that process started. So you're wanting to make sure something goes out. Is that?
Yes, I know. I would prefer, you know, CIP process can go forward. We can determine the size, size of the bucket in May when we approve that budget with the budget committee. Or end of April, whenever that final date is. ARPA dollars, I hate to do this, but we could still go out on our regular schedule with an ARPA call for proposals and say that the, the funding is subject to availability and that we won't know until after the bond measure. That's also a possibility. Or we can say that we will have limited ARPA money this year and that we might have a a larger final round next year, which, you know, since we were contemplating two more rounds. I think that there are a lot of different ways of doing it, but would allow us to still have some.
So there, there is to, to, there's a way to your point to be able to continue to move the processes forward with the understanding, though, to, to your point that we're running the process, we're getting the preliminary awards, if you will, or preliminary commitments in place, but until we get to a March fifteenth timeframe, we won't be able to make those hard commitments to that point. Is that?
Until we get to the May.
Or, sorry, May, Tom measure.
May, I'm sorry, I said March, May. Wishful thinking, yeah.
And just for clarification, wouldn't it really be the legislative session, the June fifteen date?
Probably June fifteen.
Well, we have several opportunities as the year goes along to it sounds like OJD dollars might be the the soonest that we would know about. And I have several deadlines.
Once, once every half of those answers, we would be able to then make more permanent. But, but again, just wanting to make sure we're clear is that moving the process forward as we have planned in both cases, but with the understanding that we don't make that final push the button until we know what the final results are.
Yeah, I would definitely say go forward. I'm, I'm involved, have been involved with the CIP process and it's a, a little bit of a squishy number and projects have been known to get deferred in, into the next biennium, depending on priorities and, and funding availability. And on the ARPA, we have two more rounds. Is that correct? Correct. I, I guess I would flip what Commissioner Ogero said and probably have more fully funding on the immediate allocation and then get the word out that the final round is maybe dependent on some things that happened in the first half of this year. Just so those folks have more time to plan and I could see maybe reducing the, the next round modestly and have the bigger reprioritization in the, in the final year. But just, you were asking, definitely go forward on, on both the CIP and the ARPA projects.
We go back to the slide that shows different options, page fifty-six. Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'm thinking that the most likely scenario is something like D, although I would, as I've already said, prefer not to go for the strategic limited budget or hiring component.
But, but it could be a relatively modest.
Yeah.
And depending on staffing vacancies and, and again, prioritizing new hires.
Capitalizing the, the LED is just something I'm not ready to contemplate yet. What is, yeah, can you please refresh me on what that means?
That's simply selling the county's portion of the existing law enforcement building, approximately eleven thousand square feet.
And the OJD allocation savings, that was the three hundred thousand or no, that's
Zero to four million.
So basically that's us hoping that we can which we would do either way.
It will be our position and we will, I know Vance will help us as well as we move forward into our funding agreement negotiations, which is the next piece after the master to be able to get the entire, you might remember fifteen million dollar total site development cost attributed to the OJD portion. Again, we made a conservative estimate thinking, okay, if we don't get that, we don't want to be short. So we're going to go for it all. And we think we have a good case.
And that came from DLR.
That did.
Yes.
And they stand behind that number.
They stand, the, the four million.
The, the higher fifteen million.
So I guess when it comes to these sorts of decisions with lots of moving parts, that helps me to go back to what my priorities are. My first priority is always good governance. So that rules out for me strategic limited budget or hiring. I mean, it, I don't want to harm our government functions or unnecessarily burden our staff. That's not good governance. That is my least favorite option. Next. I mean, if it comes down to CIP over ARPA, as much as I sit here and say, yes, I've said in the past that we're going to allocate ARPA dollars. Government taxpayer money, well, okay. Good governance, CIP, government projects. That to me is a priority over ARPA if I have to draw a line, which I don't want to do, but and again, I don't think we have to do all of one or all of another. And depending on how some of these other things pop, we won't have to. It's just the work, planning for the worst case scenario.
I, I guess I, I'm having a hard time. I'm, I don't feel like I'm in a good place. I don't have enough information to make a great decision on this today. I know bringing it back to the next meeting was an option. I would prefer to do that. And it would be very helpful if I could get some sort of rundown explanation. Just more, more details on what the, on what this would look like for that next meeting. Does that sound?
Okay, we're good. Yeah, and absolutely, Commissioner Wise, we want to make sure it's clear to all of you. That's what's most important here. And I guess I would, what I hear you all saying though is, is let's, let's, to the extent we can maintain our, our critical processes, our CIP processes, our ARPA processes, with the understanding that we do have some of these things are still a little bit unknown. The OJD piece is unknown, which I would circle that one as a big piece. The state legislative process is unknown. So it's kind of continuing to move, I hate to say this, but a little bit kicking it down the road a, a bit because you want your processes to continue. But at some point, if things didn't come the way you would expect, there may be a difficult decision to make to say, okay, we have all these aligned CIP projects or all these aligned ARPA projects and we're not going to be able to fund those. Or to Commissioner Malone's point is, in our ARPA case, maybe you fund this round, but then next round, you're not able to. So I guess it, it doesn't, it doesn't put, I think what we, we were recommending was to kind of make that decision right now. And so we had a concrete, I guess, bank or backstop, if you will, that would protect what you're saying is let's keep moving it forward, understanding that we may have to come up with a backstop and here's our different solutions. So, and what this does for you, Commissioner Wise, is probably for all of you, gives you a little bit better idea because the processes will continue to move. You'll know what exactly CIP projects are we talking about, what exact ARPA projects are we talking about? And that maybe makes decisions a little easier.
I think part of what else also is to put together a calendar of when some of those, that other, those other sources of information might come clear. And what the decision points are in order to actually go ahead with you know, an ARPA process this year that looks like A or B. I know it's more work, but it would help just so that we know where those decision points are.
I think what I can, I can draw you up a little plan for next week that just says, this is, this is how we would move forward to show you how all the processes are going to move forward, but also to show you the key timing in terms of when decisions might have to be made to redirect. But again, we would put the process in a place where everybody's very, very clear that these are subject to potential change, particularly the CIP piece. I think the ARPA, you have flexibility work on the backside. But on the CIP, that might be where you have to be a little more clear.
Yeah, understanding those interdependencies.
Correct.
Well, it, it seems like we've at least narrowed the, the list to probably DE and F or DNF. And is that sufficient for moving forward today?
It is, it is certainly in terms of preparing for next, next Tuesday as well.
But I think consensus is try to keep county functions as intact as we can and, and see what kind of potential savings there are and, and do a little slicing on as, as many areas as we can to come up with of four million that we're potentially short.
I like that assessment with the caveat of D under OJD allocation savings. So is that when we say partial, do we mean if, let's say there's four million, this partial mean, does that mean two million of it here and two million somewhere else? Or does that mean that, oh, we only saved two million instead of four million?
I was suggesting there that there's probably somewhere between zero and four million in savings. And so, you know, fifty percent probability of four million savings is two million dollars. So it's not
Represent the variable amount of what it is, not to say that whatever amount we get, we'd only use part of it to backstop. Perfect. Thank you. That's all project money.
It's all project. It can, can't be used for anything else.
Just making sure I understand.
Okay, any last thoughts on this topic? Well, if not, and, and I do like the idea of a little bit of a calendar when like the OJD decision might be made, we, we know the legislature might be mid-June before we know and, and just fill in potential timelines, I think, would, would be helpful and see how we're, what kind of progress we're making on reducing the four million to zero.
Commissioners will bring that timeline back to you next Tuesday as well as vetting the options that you've talked about here today. And Commissioner Wise will be happy to meet with you in advance of that, if that would help or any of the other commissioners as well.
Sure. And along with that, could we just, can I request having the wording of the motion with that information too?
Meaning the wording of motion that you made today?
Yes, yeah. Just so I have it in front of me. I know, I know approximately what it is. I'm just saying it'll be helpful to have it in front of me when considering all this.
Okay.
Our commissioners also just taking a minute to really highlight the importance of the decision that you've made today. It is a significant decision for the county moving forward and so much of the work that has happened over the last three plus years really is culminating in decisions that you're making today, next Tuesday. So thank you for walking through the dialogue and coming to a decision.
Thank you for all the fantastic information support. You all have made it pretty straightforward to make these decisions in an incremental way.
Commissioners, appreciate.
Thank you, but thank you.
Next up, we'll move on to new business. Suzanne Hoffman, a letter of support for the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center Navigation Center. Think we need to tighten up the name a little bit. And there's Suzanne. So would you like to start off the discussion?
I would. Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, everyone. And I would also, I believe that Allison Hopgood is, may still be in the audience. Would like to welcome her to join me in this conversation as well as Nick Kirk, if he is gonna hang around in the room.
You just caught him.
Great, thank you. I'll just begin by letting you know that we come before you this morning requesting your support for a letter of support for Allison Hopgood and the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center's efforts and leadership in expanding the Daytime Drop-In Center and actually creating a larger space that becomes a navigation center. As is stated in your documents in your packet, this touches on several of the HOPE recommendations that were accepted by the city of Corvallis and by all of you and is come this far as a result of a community conversation around the need for a navigation center or resource center. With lots of partnership from existing social service providers and city and county engaged in that effort. Allison has stepped up in a leadership capacity to pursue this further. And this letter of support, along with the city of Corvallis's letter of support, and I imagine many others, would be provided. uh would be provided uh to Allison and her organization to be able to take forward uh to use um in a request from a variety of different funding sources, including the state legislature. Um I will, I will leave it there and invite Allison uh and and Nick uh to chime in with their comments.
I thank you Suzanne. This is Allison speaking. Um I don't have a ton more to add, other than to say that I'm just been really grateful for everyone's support so far. Um I've spent the last um couple of days and um you know, many, many months before that, talking with guests at the Drop-In Center about what their needs are, what their visions are for the future, and it's exciting to be sitting here today and and seeing those um some of those visions come to fruition, um at least, you know, the important steps that can make those happen. And so um in addition to those letters that Suzanne mentioned from the city and from you all, and um our guests are really excited to um have their voices heard at, you know, at the legislative level as well, and and it's been powerful to talk with them about that process and um and the moving forward. So um I'm hopeful that this is, you know, something you're willing to support. And if you have any specific questions as to the project or the nature of the letter, um please let me know. I also want to thank um Nick and and Rick and um a lot of other folks in this room who have helped me to learn in the process of how to um do an expansion project like this and think about new, really creative solutions and in working together across governance and nonprofits, so.
Well, I'll just I'll just add that um yeah, this is a very exciting collaboration, and there's no better way to say it. Um a- as we just heard, there's so many moving parts with with the good work that we're trying to do, and that that makes things challenging, uh certainly, but um I think uh we're putting our best foot forward. We really uh investing in uh the right, the right programs and facilities to support them. The navigation center is certainly one. Uh so um you know, as you heard, we have uh meetings later this week uh to work on the details. Uh the devil is always in the details. Um uh but uh we're we're taking it in stride and uh should be a fun journey.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Uh I just like to uh say I I I'm a big fan of one-stop shopping and and centralizing uh services and really appreciate the uh collaboration between county government, city government, uh nonpro- local nonprofits. Uh I I these are uh l- large issues that we're dealing with and no one agency really has the horsepower to uh move things forward, so uh like we um need to. So this is I think a great um um project and glad it's um being included in the JCP um project um to to uh show that the county is serious about um helping solve some of our ho- homeless and and uh housing and other um other issues that we uh need to work with. And and this is um um this is great. Th- this is a wonderful way to start out the new year. So um I would, there's no other questions or discussions, so I'm ready for a motion.
Um well, thank you uh Allison for your leadership here and for your vision, working with your guests to come together with something that addresses the HOPE Advisory Board's recommendations as well as um addresses the clear need for those folks that are unhoused in the community. So I would move to approve the letter of support for the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Centers Navigation Center. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Allison and Nick.
Thanks, Suzanne.
Okay, next up, um uh goods and services contract, uh Faith Open Charity, Inc., Emergency Inclimate Weather Services and uh Suzanne Hoffman and uh John Peg. So I think you gonna start us off, Suzanne?
Sure, I I'll uh first ask Vance. Uh Vance, is this something that you would want to uh give some context for before we begin, or would you prefer we launch right in? Just let me know your preference.
Three, two, one, launch. Uh I I the only thing I I would add is that I did take a look at the contract on this weekend. Um I had comment, John addressed it. So the word, the the specific contract that's in the packet has been amended very slightly, just to clarify who the responsible in terms of eligibility. Uh so if you're inclined to go forward with this, um I would ask that you approve uh the contract estimate.
Great, thank you. And um thank you to John Peg for joining me here today. He's really done the heavy lifting on all of this um and is here to uh respond to any more detailed questions that you may have about the contract itself or some of the conversations we've had. But I'll uh set the stage uh for just reminding everyone that uh we did issue a request for proposals in RFP uh for a service provider uh to provide uh severe weather, inclement weather services. Um this is different than regular shelter. This is emergency weather or uh certain conditions like smoke kind of shelter that only gets activated under certain pretty strict thresholds. Those thresholds can change with available resources. Um for example, there's a county in Oregon that only activates at twenty-five degrees. Anything warmer than that may not trigger an opening. Some are at thirty degrees, some are at thirty-two. Um obviously, it's not a statement about uh comfort level being outdoors so so much as resource availability to be able to open up inclement weather shelters um and to have the service provider availability and the space and the funding to do so. Um we hope that this is just the beginning of what will become a more robust plan over time as funding is available, uh as service provider capacity increases, not only in our area, but around the state. Um so all that to say is, we did not get a response to our request for proposal, our RFP. Um uh one of our primary service providers in the Corvallis area did contact me on the last day, uh the deadline date for submission of any interest. Uh just to explain to me why they were not going to propose this time, as difficult a decision as it was for them to make. Um and it was primarily because of capacity issues and concerns about having enough staff in their organization um who were trained in specific skills to be able to operate a shelter like this overnight uh for for um a population that may have some individuals with some significant needs. Uh we also reached out uh to service providers um nearby. Um a- as we've talked about before, our vision is really similar to the uh has been similar to the Eagan Warning Center model in the Eugene and Lane County areas that I think I believe it's a Lane County contract with St. Vinnie's. That's a pretty mature model and cares for a much higher volume uh of individuals than than we would here. Um but they do so um well uh by all accounts um and um and and with uh kind of a minimum of staff resource and and a plethora of volunteer resources. Uh but they were unable to partner with us in this endeavor because they too are having capacity challenges. And I don't know if you've heard what I've heard on the radio uh over the last uh several weeks, but uh they've had a call out for additional volunteers uh because they've had difficulty being able to provide the capacity that they even normally would for that area. So unfortunately, they're just not prepared uh to take on an additional uh county or city. Um but of course, we'll leave the door open for future conversations a- as we hope that capacity issue resolves. And also, of course, this year, um warning centers that were already established were opening much earlier than they had anticipated. I believe the contract with St. Vinnie's for the Eagan Warning Center uh normally doesn't open until, I I believe, maybe the month of December, but they were prepared to alter that and open earlier based on the arrival of very cold temperatures uh sooner than normal. Um so we were in the process of taking our Plan B, which John is also uh with April's leadership, uh work to develop. And I have provided that plan uh to uh County Administrator Joe Kirby because we believe it needs a risk review uh because Plan B is really uh that if we can't find a service provider who's able to join us in this work, and uh then we have to look at, okay, is this something that the county can and and should take on with its either existing employees, with with new employees that would be a stop? Uh what what might that look like? Um and so uh but that plan, we know, requires a a review for risk and probably a presentation for a policy decision from all of you uh as to what that might look like for the future. Uh and that's what we thought our path ahead was going to be. Um fortunately, um Fred Edwards, uh the founder and CEO of Faith, Hope and Charity, a a nonprofit 501(c)(3) in our area um approached us and uh said that uh his organization was uh willing and enthusiastic about taking this on. And over the course of the last few weeks, uh we've been in uh detailed conversation uh with Mr. Edwards about what we think this needs to look like and what their organization is capable of doing at this stage. Um and uh we're able to come to agreement on all of the salient issues to get a program started. Uh and a a very special thank you, not only to John, but also to Karen and Gabby in contracts. Um they really, in record time, got together with John and with John and I and worked through uh all the the contract uh details uh and and requirements so that we would be ready uh to bring this to you today and for Vance to have the opportunity to review it, albeit um not a lot of time uh just uh just returning from his time away. Uh but we know that because this is outside of the competitive process, as uh Vance has instructed us, we need to come to you for approval before we can sign off on this and get started uh with Faith, Hope and Charity. And uh we consider the matter urgent, so we certainly didn't want to wait any longer than today's meeting to be able to before you. And with that, um John and I'll uh do our best to answer any questions you might have.
I don't have any questions, but I can make a motion.
Um I
Questions, your comments?
Uh just one question, comment. I that this, the model has shifted a little bit, as I understand it, uh to be a hoteling model rather than uh a specific, you know, uh place-based model. Um and I'm I'm just wanted to say that um I it's different, um but I hope it will be successful, and I'm grateful that we have local uh hotels and motels that are willing to engage with us in this effort.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um I'm excited by that. Um and and um and I understand that there can be concerns around the model too. I I'm I'm pleased that this is the route that Faith Open here has proposed, and and even upon our first before we had our first meeting with them, start to talk about what a contractual agreement could could look like. They had already approached hotels and gotten commitments for a certain number of rooms, and they are confident that they can get more. Um and that's gonna be um, I think, a a much better arrangement for a number of logistical purposes um a- as well as um you know, during this time of di- of uh, you know, respiratory virus transmission and all of those things, probably better than congregate shelter. On the other hand, we do know that it may not be successful for everyone and and um and the sheer numbers uh that came into the um emergency shelter that we set up uh the Thursday uh before the holiday. Um I we're need to confirm this final number, but um informally, the information I have is that uh as many as thirty people were served. And so, and that was with less than twenty-four hours of outreach and notice and planning. So I I assume that if weather like what we experienced continues and uh if we have a a a definite plan and policy about how we handle this, um what we have um in what we're putting in place with with Faith, Hope and Charity may not be sufficient to handle the entire volume, and we may still need to have more overflow capacity um either just to handle the sheer volume or to uh be able to invite guests in who maybe cannot be or have not been successful in a hotel room situation. So not seeing this as a as our only effort, it is uh hopefully just one piece in a continuum that we can put in place um to accommodate everyone who may need to come in. And again, we're not looking at this as a regular shelter operation, but really as a life, health and safety emergency response. Um and so uh we hope that that we're leaving room for growth in this Faith, Hope and Charity contract, and we uh want to be moving forward with other service providers as their capacity increases. And then, of course, taking a look at what uh the county could do directly in the future so that we can cover all of those bases.
Okay, uh uh I see a a budget and a I think a fifty thousand dollar uh limit. Uh where are those uh funds coming from?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh those funds are in the HOPE uh program budget specifically um in the ARPA category. Uh I worked with um finance to determine what we would have remaining um after we cover uh the uh salaries of the limited duration and contracted individuals um that we're uh planning to use that funding for. As you remember, we brought on a project manager as well as a contracted grant writer and researcher as part of the uh coordinated effort. And uh determined that it uh would be a a safe estimate of fifty thousand dollars of those funds to be able to be used for this to get started. That is not really sufficient for our needs, but it does give us something to start with. We've also made the request with your permission um to the city of Corvallis to be able to take advantage of the funding opportunity that they put forth. Um and have been in ongoing contact with them about where we are in this process. Uh and they have actually um that I think they're taking their staff proposals to city council about those funds on January seventeenth, um which uh gives them time to see what happens today. Are we able to establish a contract with Faith, Hope and Charity? If so, how much more funding could we use uh from from their designation to be able to apply to this effort to be able to do more? Um so those those are the two sources we have today, and of course, as part of our ongoing coordinated uh response work with the city, county and CSC, uh we we hope to be seeking out additional sources for the future.
Great, uh thank you for that uh context, uh how we're uh operating uh uh seems like another uh piece of uh the puzzle to um m- move the county forward and help help the people that uh uh need help. So uh I I I appreciate your description of we're giving this a try and and um seeing what kind of what how many people are wanting to access this, but um seems like a good good start. And see.
I move to approve the contract with Faith, Hope Charity, Inc. for severe weather shelter independent upon review and approval by county council. As amended, as amended. He's already reviewed it.
Is that what you were gonna add, Joe?
I was.
Okay. Is that?
Okay, so do we that motion with as amended works?
Yep, yep.
Great. Second.
Uh all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
And now, um uh eight point three uh State Transportation Improvement Fund also known as STIF um committee project and budget recommendations for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-five uh biennium. So So we have Gary Stockoff, Lisa Scherf. And Brad Dillingham with us, so. Do you want to start us off, Gary?
I will do that. Thank you, Commissioners. Just want to hats off to Lisa and Brad and the committee. That has done a lot of heavy lifting in the last couple of months to get us to a point where you have. Today, the methodology to confirm and then the list of projects for the next biennium and it's a robust list of projects and. We've had to adapt a little bit based on some things that ODOT wanted us to do or not do. But again, Brad and Lisa have done a marvelous job and and. Shepherding this through the committee, which is a new committee and it took us a while to get it stood up, but they are they are a good group. So with that said, I'm going to defer now and turn over to Lisa and she can go through the the nuts and bolts of the program.
Thank you, Gary, and good morning, Commissioners. As as Gary said. I, the committee did some excellent work and I think it was it was challenging this year because we had a compressed timeline with standing up the new committee and then. A much shorter deadline from ODOT, so. It it was a challenge, but they they were, they rose to the challenge and made themselves available and did really excellent work, so. I wanted you to know that about the committee that you appointed. This is a biennial cycle for this funding and I believe you are all familiar with it. Comes from the, originally from the House Bill twenty seventeen transportation package that included a. Point one percent, point one, yes, one ten, one percent. Tax on employee payroll to fund public transit in the state. Benton County is the qualified entity for that process, therefore. All the projects that are funded in this county, whether they be Benton County. City of Albany operating Lynn Benton Loop that serves Benton County, City of Corvallis, Fullmouth Connection. And Adair Village all passed through the Board of Commissioners for approval of a plan. A stiff plan that represents a program of projects that we will submit to ODOT. These funds will become available. Of twenty twenty-three and run through June thirty of twenty twenty-five. The first thing that I I'd like to take care of has to do with the allocation methodology. Statutorily and by rule, the board, the qualified entity, which is the Board of Commissioners in our case. Is required to. It's sub allocate, sub allocation methodology. Which is kind of a fancy way of saying the formula for a starting place on how you're going to distribute the money. By statute, the starting place has to be. The payroll that is collected in the respective areas if there is a a city. So within the city limits of Fullmouth, for example. The starting place for funding for Fullmouth's transit projects is how much payroll was collected in Fullmouth. So that's the starting place and this has to be updated every six years. Your committee and you, the board acknowledged. And approved a funding methodology in the first cycle and so therefore it wasn't required that you would. Redo this this time, and so the committee had elected to recommend that they you keep the existing. Funding methodology, which wasn't just based on payroll, it was actually based on. Four factors, I think it was payroll, number of jobs and number of job sites in each locale. And then another factor that incorporated. What we called at the time a ten-factor equity analysis, and so there were other kinds of equity-related things. Number of persons with disabilities. Number of low-income households and and so on that made up that fourth factor, so. I don't have right in front of me the. Or do I? It might be in the packet.
It's in our packet.
Gotcha. So it's attachment A, it's a green spreadsheet. And I guess if we. If Gary or somebody wanted to screen share, we could, we could look at it. I don't, I don't want to try to fiddle around with that. But the percentages are shown there that result from that four-factor analysis. And I can tell you that as the starting place, that's what the committee used, but it didn't end up there. So it really, this project process is project-driven and. It's not meant to be, okay, City of Corvallis, here's your seventy-seven percent, now you get to spend it. It's submit projects and we will evaluate them and we'll see where they fall out. And so, as it turns out, the City of Corvallis is getting far less than seventy-seven percent. Part of that is because. Albany. Like the Lynn Benton Loop and the COG don't have. Really allocation, well, the COG doesn't have any allocation and the City of Albany's only allocation are is for North Albany. So it doesn't really reflect the service being provided by the Lynn Benton Loop. And so those two necessarily consume part of the available funds. Because the projects that they're providing are really worthwhile, the committee felt to the county. So I would entertain any questions that you have on the sub-allocation. Methodology before we move on to the plan of projects.
I guess I have a question about. Does the City of Corvallis, do we notify them of this? Do they? Are they aware of this?
Yeah, so the, that's an excellent question. Commissioner Weiss, the the rules, and these are new rules. Because the funding sources, there were, there, you know, two legacy, well, a legacy funding source that has historically been used for. Older adults and individuals with disabilities got combined with this transit tax money and now it's all called stiff money. And so. So new rules had to be written. Part of the new rules were, and this was, this was. An outcome of other areas that don't operate as collaboratively as this one does. We have a very collaborative county, which is just incredible. I hear. Horror stories from neighbors to the east, anyway. There's a requirement that all public transportation service providers be involved or informed of. Decisions that are made around the sub-allocation methodology and so. Literally, the City of Corvallis has a table, has a seat at the table on the committee. The, I would say, the county does in Gary, who is a ex officio, so doesn't vote. The COG has a seat on the on the committee. And so, all and then the City of Albany attended all the meetings where this was discussed, so there was a very open and. Collaborative discussion around this and and there were no objections raised.
Thank you. I want to make sure that our partners are aware.
Oh, absolutely. This is not performative. By the way, this is my daily mug, Brad can.
Well, and the collaboration is of course demonstrated by the fact that our staff for this actually work through for the City of Corvallis. And so they report directly to city and county, so. Are we, okay, taking this incrementally and approving the methodology first? Yeah, I think it has to be.
I had a question. Going to the sub-allocation. Why isn't Alsea on there or how how does that work? So are other communities are represented in the, in the formula? Just curious about Alsea.
That's a good question. Brad can maybe help me, but I'm going to say that Alsea is represented, any, any of the communities besides. North Albany, Adair Village, Corvallis, Monroe and Fullmouth are represented by Benton County. So any funds that are collected. And in Alsea would be part of the money that is allocated to Benton County. Because there is no separate. Transit system. For Alsea. And I I realize as I say that, that there also isn't a separate one for the City of Monroe, so Benton County. That Benton Area Transit would be the service provider for Monroe as well. Is there anything that you can add to that, Brad, to explain why as a, as an incorporated city, Alsea? So that's why. That's the answer then.
All right, and the other question, you mentioned the Lynn Benton Loop. How is that? How is that funded? I mean, it it serves the the whole. Territory and so, which which pot of money does their funding come from?
So they have, they have access to federal funds. And which they use, but those funds require match and so they provide that match and to do other things like. Purchase buses or have match for buses. They tend to split their requests equally between Benton County and Lynn County. As the qualified entities for the stiff funds. And so, anything that you see in here that is showing for the Lynn Benton Loop is. A fifty percent request with that similar request going to Lynn County as well. And again, the way it works is that even though there is a quote. Allocation shown on that spreadsheet on attachment A, it's really just a starting place and. The the rules are very clear that this is meant to be project-based and not really. Grant-based, it's not that, it's not that you get money and then you get, you know, you're just awarded it by formula. You have to have projects and so because, or all the City of Albany has. The operation of the Lynn Benton Loop as a project that serves both counties that qualifies it to get money from. From Benton County's allocation.
Okay, well, thank you.
Well, I would reaffirm the sub-allocation methodology for distribution of stiff funds in Benton County. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So I will say that in two years or something less, a little bit less than two years. The committee will be working on updating that methodology, so you'll see an update to that when we go through this again. Doesn't mean it'll be. Different in any meaningful way, but we do have to, we are intended to break it apart and look at it, make sure it's still working in the way it was intended every six years.
Okay, and I I don't think in the packet, the committee members were listed, so that would be. Helpful at some point to know who's, you know, working on this.
Okay, I don't, do you, this is just a kind of a county procedural thing that I don't know, do you get their minutes? Just kind of routinely?
Uh, don't think so.
Okay, okay.
Commissioners, we can make sure that those minutes are forwarded to you. Gary can take care of that.
Okay, great.
Do we need motions for number two? I think they, I think you'd want to speak to the projects before we move forward with that, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yes, and so this, this was, this one little spreadsheet in attachment B represents. A lot of work, a lot of work, and I really want to shout out Brad, his, his skill in organizing information and. You know, just representing it clearly is was very, very helpful to the committee and and I hope to the board. So I think this spreadsheet most. Did somebody want? Did somebody want to say something? No, I thought I, I thought I, somebody tried to, tried to say something. We, where we started was with a long list of projects. And and then staff reviews the applications that have come in through ODOT. Because all the providers were meant, were required to apply through ODOT and just make sure that it meets the intent of the funding. Many of the projects were returning projects and that is shown. On this list by. I want to say the bold is a returning project. So if you look into the, at the spreadsheet, a detachment B, bold indicates a project that was in the previous plan. Italics represents projects that are matched to other grants. We started with the list of projects that had been submitted. And a, and a funding amount and the funding amount is a little complicated this time because. We got an estimate from ODOT. Last time we got one in July and then we got an update in December. This time we just got the one and it was in September, so I guess they split the middle there. And so we're working with a number that is kind of a best guess by the, by the Department of Revenue State. And so what ODOT asked us to do is to take that number and inflate it by twenty percent. Because there's no opportunity to open these plans and modify them throughout the two years. And so they wanted us to come up with maybe more projects than we thought we had funds for, just in case the collections come in higher. And we would have some projects to fill in the gaps. And so the necessary outcome of that is to rank the projects so that if. Collections don't come in higher, you you know in which order to start not funding things, if you will. So. We didn't show it on this spreadsheet because it was a little wonky, but the, where it says the total. Well, I guess it does say that the total program amount at the bottom is eight point two million. The projected collections are not quite that high. They are actually seven point four million. So there's a little bit of a gap in there, but we also have a reserve of almost seven hundred thousand that. Could be used to bridge that. If collections don't come in. So the bottom line is that the projects that came in fit within. ODOT's recommendations on funding, so the committee didn't have to make any hard decisions about. Really eliminating projects, they simply had to prioritize them. And so. You'll see the the results of this priority ranking here. And that was based, that process was based on. As objective as it could be, as a one to ten, a kind of a matrix of. Different factors such as does this continue in existing service, which is why you'll see service projects are. Really at the top of this list, existing service projects. Does it provide direct service to individuals with low income? You know, there were, there was quite a list of criteria and points assigned and then adding up the points and it produced this ranking. Some of which are ties, you know, there there are four that, you know, rank number ten, for example. So that's one thing. The other piece that the committee was very careful to. Evaluate and they did last time as well, is how much of this money is tied up in operations projects? Because once you start an operations project, assuming it's productive and doing what it's meant to do. You you need to be able to continue it into the future. And so it doesn't show here, but staff did a separate analysis where. We looked at the total of the ongoing operations and determined that it could fit within. Not the expanded amount that ODOT recommended, but within the unexpanded amount that we expect to collect. And so. So we feel good about the ability to sustain these projects into the future. And then capital projects are sort of easy to. Dream if you have to or look to other sources for, there are other opportunities to come up for, for bus grants and. For example, the City of Corvallis gets a different source of funding that is federal. For capital purchases and. Capitalized maintenance and so we have the ability to to provide some of those things if they have to be cut. Would Gary or Brad, would you say I've I've missed anything? So, yeah, it was, it was. As much work as it was, it was nice to have all the projects fit within the allocation and still have a reserve. And I think you can feel really good about that. I'm happy to entertain questions. And I think you can feel really good about that. I'm, I'm happy to entertain questions.
Any questions?
One thing I would add commissioners is that the reason that we have a balance is that we had a rather large carryover from. The previous biennium and this one. And ODOT doesn't or didn't like our Uppers approach, unanticipated projects. Which would be those things that we would add later on. And as Lisa said. We really need to have all the projects that we want and anticipate in the next two years to be on that list. So. We tried our best to obligate and do the things that, you know, ODOT has asked us to do. So that's why you see the, the figures on there the way they are. And, and we still have a reserve. So that was very much intended by the committee that we didn't drain everything, but we did leave something in reserve.
Right, and Gary made, made another excellent point, which was. ODOT also does not want us to carry a, a large reserve. They, they really want us, they wanted the committee to look ahead for two years. And, and spend the money. You know, COVID did definitely created issues with, well, all kinds of things, but one of the issues that created in transit is we just didn't get projects started. And so that, that's what built up the big reserve. And they, they don't want to see that kind of carryover in our plan. So. That's why it's, it's fully spent and yet still has a reserve.
With the reserve, can you add a project? In the biennium?
No, that's kind of what, what Gary said. They didn't really, you know, they let us do it, but they didn't really like, and they made it clear this time that they didn't like. They didn't want us to be able to add projects as we have been doing, and we've got a couple more yet for this biennium, but. In future, we were meant to anticipate. Really anything that would come. So, and some of these are kind of bucket type projects that could. Be expanded in some way. For example, bus stop amenities shows up for both. All of Corvallis Transit, Flemish Connection and Benton Area Transit. And that, that could mean bus stop amenities could mean a lot of things. And so that's an area where we might previously have had to come forward with an Uppers project to, to do. You know, a, a shelter improvement or, or something like that. Even a, a walkway improvement around a shelter. And since we can't add projects, we've, we tried to look at projects that could accommodate. A little growth within the category.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions that aren't project related. It's okay. And though they are more transit system related in general, what, how are we doing overall in terms of? Ridership and in terms of drivers at the moment?
I'm gonna let Brad address that because he, he keeps really close tabs on that and. I think he's got, I think he's got a report that you'll be pleased with.
Good morning and happy New Year, commissioners. To answer your questions, so for our fixed route services, that's, you know, our Costa Valley Express, which goes between Amtrak and the coast. And our ninety-nine express, which goes between Corvallis and Adair Village. Those services are actually doing really well. I think nation. Or at least Oregon wide ridership is down. Like, not, not to rub it in in any way, but I think CTS is down, what would you say, thirty or forty percent from pre-pandemic levels? Whereas alternatively. Bats. Fixed route services are up a hundred and fifty percent. Pre-pandemic levels. So part of that is. You know, pandemic allowed us to make some changes with our fare structure to make it more affordable for people. And also just to better align our services with. The schedules of our services with the schedules of other services, for example. Our Costa Valley aligns really well with the train schedule, the Amtrak train schedule. And then both services align really well with CTS. So if anyone's come to Corvallis, they can move around. Pretty well. As far as. The Bat Lift Services or the, which is the umbrella term for paratransit. Or the countywide demand response services. Those numbers are still, they're still down from pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic levels. I don't have the report right in front of me, but I think last time I checked it was down about forty percent. So, but it's been consistent. I think in the last. Well, about last year, it's kind of just stayed right around forty percent. And so. I feel like it's. Relatively safe to kind of say that that is kind of the trend now. That's kind of. It's becoming a baseline for, for us. So. So that's kind of the update on ridership. As far as finding drivers, we've. We've stayed relatively stable, but it is still kind of, it is kind of scary. Other. Other agencies are struggling. Albany and Corvallis, you know, drivers, they, they lead one agency for the other and vice versa and back and forth. And then they go to the school district. So we're all kind of fighting over the same pool of drivers. So, yeah, we're holding on, we're maintaining service levels. But as part of the stiff, we have funding to expand services. We just. Finding drivers to use those funds is difficult.
Things I, I just wanted also jump in and say that Brad kind of skimmed over it, but. He worked really hard and it was no small thing, you know, when it comes dealing with the railroads. He, he set up. The Costa Valley as what's called an interlined service with Amtrak. So when somebody purchases a ticket, like they want to come from Portland to the coast. They can actually purchase a ticket for their, the bus portion of their trip on. The Costa Valley Express through Amtrak. And so that has definitely, I think, contributed to the ridership increase.
That's fantastic. Thank you. Well, I do see that there's also. Driver training that will be provided through LBCC in the COG. And so I'm, I'm glad, I hope that will perhaps address some of the driver shortage.
Yes. We hope so.
Thank you.
Yeah, CTS has, as you may know, has, has cut weekend service altogether, which is. That is maybe to me, I mean, I really. We are, we're, we're taking steps to, to rectify that, but. Yeah, it remains an issue.
Yeah, it's most certainly. It's a downward spiral if you can't handle, if you can't arrest it.
Yep, exactly.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, we're ready for the second motion.
I move to approve the projects and associated budgets for the biennium twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five Benton County STIF Formula. Payroll projects. Sorry, if I could pause for a second, this is one, all these together are one motion, right? They're not three separate motions.
That's right.
Okay. Payroll projects. And STIF Formula, population funded projects and federal five fifty-three ten urban and rural projects.
Well, actually, now that I say that, I, I realizing that we didn't, I didn't address. It, it, it would be one motion, but we haven't talked about fifty-three ten money yet. So probably we should.
I will withdraw my motion.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so attachment C is the, the third attachment is the one that, that addresses those. As I, as we've described several times, two sources of money were combined into one. Now they're both stiff money, but they're distinguished by. The terms payroll, which was kind of the, the transit tax money. And then population is what we used to call STF or Special Transportation Fund money. So. What you see on attachment C is the population funding and that's by formula. And it's, it's kind of a legacy, it, it, it's combined of. Odd things like cigarette tax money and. What they call the lawnmower tax, non-roadway sales of fuel anyway. Crumbs of things, general fund money at the state level, and that's the population fund money. That. Mostly that is what funds the. Countywide Demand Response Program and then a number of small community providers that you see on that spreadsheet. And historically, we have, we've been funding those and, and agencies like those for a long time. And Brad put out a solicitation for projects, I think back in November, and these four applied. For some of those funds and the, the committee, the SIF committee did, did recommend funding them at this level. The other source of funding for. Older adults and individuals with disabilities is called federal fifty-three ten money. And that funds Bat Lift. Again, part of it's, part of it's. Urban, so that funds is another funding source for the countywide demand response program and the city of Corvallis and Flemish Paratransit. These monies should be fully allocated to projects. There's no. Real reserve. There, there's just, there just isn't because any reserve would just go to. Benton area transit. So you might as well just spend, you might as well just allocate it fully. That's why we don't show any kind of a reserve for it. And these are very longstanding, you know, I would say decades longstanding sources of funding.
Are these sums pretty similar to what we've allocated in the past?
They are similar. With that being said, help me remember, Brad, one, one of them was up and one, a little and one was down a little. Do you remember that, that mix?
Um, I, I do. I think on the attachment. There, there is a column that says fiscally year twenty-one, twenty-three. And then you can see the requests for, you know, each year and then a total for twenty-three, twenty-five. So Albany Colorado requested. An additional four thousand dollars. Janice House went up a little bit. And then the senior companion program for the COG. It looks like everybody went up just a little bit.
But also the, you can see, thank you for reminding me, Brad, it shows on the spreadsheet. The, because we allocate all the money to the projects without a reserve. The money that came to Benton County in the prior biennium, which we're in right now, was about four hundred and forty thousand. And what we have coming is four hundred and ninety-six thousand in the upcoming biennium. For the population based funding. So it did go up. And then the fifty-three ten went from five ninety-five to five seventy-two, so it went down a little bit.
And is the federal, so the federal money has not been as stable. It's, it sounds like it's been a little bit more challenging to, to manage.
Yeah, it's, I, I don't totally understand why they, they used, they split it. We didn't split it here on the spread. Well, we did split it. Fifty-three ten, Brad, see, this is Brad. He packs more information in these spreadsheets than, than I even realized. He did split it out into rural and small urban. To the left, where you see in the green project ID. Fifty-three ten rural and fifty-three ten small urban. For some reason, the rural money went down a, a fair bit. It went from three sixty-three to two twenty-three. And the urban money went from, kind of did the reverse. So. More, more of the reduction came in the rural funds and I just, I don't really know why.
And will that cause a problem for our demand services? I know that's already been pressured. That's a concern.
It, it, right, right. You know, it remains to be seen somewhat because we, we. We have a new RFP out and so we'll be okay for now. This is all for the next biennium, but what we don't know is what kind of. What kind of numbers are we going to get for operations in the next biennium from our contractor? And so it, there's, I mean, the CTS also has an RFP out and we, we expect. The cost to go a lot, actually. So there is some potential for costs to go up. The funding has not gone up. So we will, we'll have to see how that plays out.
I, I would just add on to that. For, for the, the Bat Lift Service. A huge majority of it is in the urban areas, though. So. The flip flop that Lisa just described. At least, I guess I'm looking for some good news. The good news is that the flip flop is in favor of. The rural areas, which is where most of the rides are taking place. And maybe that is why the flip flop happened. Because of our reporting. They saw, oh wow, you guys provide a lot of urban rides compared to rural rides.
I look forward to a more of a report on that as we move forward, but not at this time. Thank you.
You bet.
Clarifying question for the motion. Is there a preference as to whether or not I include the dollar amounts in parentheses?
I'm looking at the. Sorry, I'm looking at the suggested motion. I, I don't. I don't know that it matters.
I'll just, I'll just include them. So.
If you leave the dollars out, that does give a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, I will leave that out. I move to approve the projects and associated budgets. The biennium twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five Benton County STIF Formula Payroll Projects. And STIF Formula Population Funded Projects and Federal fifty-three ten Urban and Rural Projects.
All the favor of the motion, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And like Commissioner Ogro said. It's nice to get updates. There's a lot of moving pieces here and. Like Lisa said earlier, something about, well, it's a little complicated and, and when there's. Federal dollars and coming in and state dollars and. I think you, you didn't even have to say that. Despite its nature of the different funding streams, but it. Other than looking for drivers, it sounds like we're in pretty good shape and. Looking forward to. Maybe making some progress on that. Driver shortage, so we can. Expand routes.
I just want to say thank you for providing the information ahead of time. I appreciate having all the charts. Which if anyone is watching this or watching it later, it's page one oh five through one oh seven in our packet.
Yes, and, and, and thank you. And we, we will, we'll work with Gary to get you minutes from the committee there. Yeah, for a while we were having needs every single week, which is a lot for committees like this. And so the minutes. I don't think we have the last set of minutes ready, but we're getting there.
Oh, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Next up, nine point one, notice of intent to apply for Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant. And there they are. Brian Lee and Sheriff Van Arsdale and Ben Arsdall. Don.
Don Dale.
So, go ahead. Are you taking the lead on this, Brian? Okay, go ahead.
We're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
We, we can hear sound, but it's, it's kind of garbled.
You sound like you're underwater.
Is this any better? Okay, fantastic. Okay, so real quick, the, this grant title is the Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant. In your packet, it sort of outlines the basic background. This grant is administered through the Oregon State Fire Marshal. Using state funds. And it's a direct result of Senate Bill seven sixty-two. And it's a re- direct result of Senate Bill seven sixty two, uh, which was put in place following the Labor Day fires of twenty twenty. Um, that bill put forth a lot of requirements, clean risk maps, um, funding different state programs, equipment programs, et cetera. Uh, so the basis of this grant is actually targeting mitigation projects, wildfire mitigation projects specifically. Um, so we do intend to apply. The deadline for application um, is January thirty first, so uh, the end of this month. And um, the different categories that can be applied for are at, at the county, municipality and agency level. For us, the county maximum application, which is a competitive application, is five hundred thousand. Municipalities can apply for two hundred and fifty thousand, and then agencies have a smaller allotment allocated for them. So each level of government and jurisdiction can apply separately. So for the county, we are asking for all five hundred thousand dollars, um, broken out as a uh, project coordinator type position. And then education campaigns, vegetation mitigation and planning projects as well. So these are some of our projects that were outlined in our CWPP, both the twenty sixteen update and our current update. Um, confirming with the state that we do not have to utilize the CWPP plan that is formally updated. We can use our updated draft right now, uh, that we have in progress that will be completed just after we submit this grant application. Um, so that's kind of the basis and the overview of this, and just kind of wanted to make sure you folks know uh, that we intend to apply for this to help um, really deal with some of the mitigation hazards that we have out there related to wildfire.
Sounds like excellent timing, uh, given that we have that CWPP almost wrapped up. I don't have any questions.
Um, Brian, I, I think I heard you say this is a competitive uh, grant. What, what's the uh, total bottom money that, that's available?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. At the um, county level, there's five million dollars total. So ten counties are definitely going to be awarded some level of funding, uh, possibly more if some counties don't ask for their total allotment. Um, so we have actually pretty good odds in that capacity.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
One more thing, uh, even though it, you know, Benton County generally speaking is rated as a lower risk or moderate risk county as a whole uh, compared to other counties around the state, um, this uh, grant does take that into account to some degree. Um, and they didn't say that they were only going to prioritize high-risk counties exclusively. Uh, so they left it sort of open-ended. Keeping in mind, of course, this is a new grant and we're not a hundred percent sure how they're going to go through all the administration.
Well, I'm excited about the fact that it'll, i- if we're successful, it'll give us the capacity to actually um, manage a suite of projects. That was a big concern when we talked about the Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
And I, I would also add commissioners, just as a side note as well, uh, Darren Nichols in, in Community Development is aware that we're applying for this grant as well.
Great. Okay, uh, are we ready for a motion?
Sure. I move to allow Benton County Emergency Management to apply for the Community Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant through Oregon State Fire Marshal. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, thank you and keep us posted on uh, progress on the grant and if, if there's anything we can do to help, uh, help the process along.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, um, do we need a five-minute break?
That would be great.
And then I think the only other thing on the docket is the service districts.
When you close this meeting?
Yeah, Commissioner, we do need to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, okay. I will uh, adjourn the uh, business meeting here.
Yeah.
Oh, the gavel.
Sounds different when it's now.
Recording in progress.
We're ready to get started with the service district meetings. All right. Let's see, I will call to order the Benton County nine one one Emergency Communication Services County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve eighteen PM. First up is comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Being done, we're on to new business election of chair and vice chair. Do I hear a motion?
I would nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and Commissioner Rose as vice chair.
Would you like me to repeat that?
Sure. Sorry about that. Uh, I would nominate uh, Commissioner Malone as chair and Commissioner Ogero as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Uh, next up is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Is there any other business in this service district? Hearing none, um, meeting is adjourned.
All right, I will call the order, the Alpine County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve nineteen PM. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll go to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
All right. Um, next up is the consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Um, meeting adjourned.
And I will open the Alcee County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve twenty PM. Are there any comments from the public? Being in hearing none, we'll move on to election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Um, next up is the consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar for the, for Alcee.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Now open the Alcee Human Services County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve twenty PM. Are there any comments from the public? Being in hearing none, we'll move on to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I would nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up is the consent calendar.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is, is approved. Meeting adjourned.
And I will open the Cascade View County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve twenty one PM. Are there any comments from the public? Being in hearing none, we'll move on to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I would nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Uh, next up, uh, is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
We'll open the Benton County Agricultural Extension Services County Service District Governing Board at twelve twenty two PM. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up is the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved. Meeting adjourned.
He'll open the Hidden Valley Domestic Water Supply County Service District Governing Board at twelve twenty two PM. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I will nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up, uh, need a motion for the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved and meeting is adjourned.
I will open the County Service District Governing Board for Library Services at twelve twenty three PM. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, next up, uh, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I would move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved and meeting is adjourned.
I'll open the North Albany County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve twenty three PM. Are there any comments from the public? Being in hearing none, we'll move to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up, uh, need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar is approved and meeting is adjourned.
I'll open the South Third County Service District Governing Board Meeting at twelve twenty four PM. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to new business election of chair and vice chair for twenty twenty three.
I nominate Commissioner Malone as chair and myself as vice chair for twenty twenty three.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up, we need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent, consent calendar is approved and meeting is adjourned. That's not the rec, that's not the record.
Mistress, you are good.
Recording stopped.
Okay.